I would like to call this meeting to order, regular city council meeting of March 9th, 2015. Joanna, would you like to call the roll please?
Mayor Downing is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Carol Dodge here. Councilmember Snettinger here. Councilmember Malika is absent. Councilmember Wayne Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Carrico?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Winnicki?
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or deletions from council? Seeing none, I'm going to come down and read two proclamations. Hi everybody, welcome. The first proclamation is for National Girl Scout Week. Whereas March 12th, 2015 marks the 133rd anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Morgan Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia, and whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character, and whereas Girl Scouting continues to create gender-balanced leadership by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country a better place, and whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their valued skills in the world around them, as well as connect with others in a multicultural environment, and whereas Girl Scouts is committed to ensuring every girl has the opportunity to explore and build an interest in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, helping them to develop critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, and collaborative skills which are vital for their life, and whereas more than 2.8 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 103 years of this American tradition with 59 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement, now therefore I, Carol Dodge, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Northland, Colorado, do proclaim the week of March 8th through the 14th as Girl Scout Week. In the City of Northland, I applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the continued advancement of girls in the roles as leaders in our community, dated at Northland, Colorado, this ninth day of March 2015. And there is no one here to accept this proclamation, so we are mailing this to the Girl Scouts of Colorado organization. Our next proclamation is Play Day proclamation, and I think we have Debbie Austin, our recreation supervisor here, to receive. Come on up. Okay, Play Day proclamation. Whereas play is a crucial factor in the overall well-being of children and play spaces and playgrounds within walking distance of children's homes to exist within our community, and whereas unstructured, unplanned, spontaneous, and self-motivated play is on the decline, and we would like to reverse that trend in our community, and whereas we would like to encourage children to spend time outside at parks and playgrounds with their friends, parents, and other trusted adults, and whereas children who play are healthier and suffer less obesity and obesity-related health problems such as diabetes and heart disease, and whereas children who play do better in school and develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance, and whereas children who play learn the social skills that help them become happy and well-adjusted adults, and whereas we encourage everyone in the community, adults, parents, schools, nonprofit organizations, businesses, churches, and all interested parties to raise this community's awareness about play and to help raise this community's children to become healthy, happy, and successful adults, and whereas all citizens will be encouraged to continue to support and maintain play spaces and playgrounds for the well-being of this and future generations, and whereas on July 4th, spend time playing with your family in your neighborhood, at the July 4th Family Festival, or in a local park. Special Play Day activities will be held on July 4th, and everyone is invited to join in. Whereas play is practice, and practice makes perfect. Now go out and play. Now therefore I, Carol Dodge, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Northland, Colorado, hereby proclaim July 4th, 2015, as the Play Day in the City of Northland, Colorado, dated at Northland, Colorado, this ninth day of March 2015. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a dedicated service award. Is Roy Hess here? Roy Hess? I don't see him.
Wait, we could see if he comes.
We're going to wait on our dedicated service award. Okay, now I'd like to invite Jenny Murphy forward because she is going to make our presentation for the 2015 Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards tonight. Thanks Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I'm, as you know, excited to be here. This is probably one of the most special and favorite parts of my job, and I know you'll feel the same way after I finish this evening. Tonight, we're recognizing the 2015 nominees for the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards. Fifteen amazing students from Northland High School, Vantage Point High School, and Crossroads Middle School were all honored. As many of you know, the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Award is presented to youth ages 13 to 19 who serve as role models and inspiration to all of us. The mission statement of ACM-CYA is to identify and recognize young people who have overcome obstacles through service to self, family, school, or community, and to offer them opportunities for further development as valued and contributing members of society. The 15 students tonight that we're all honoring have created positive changes in their personal lives in the face of considerable adversity. I would like to share a portion of each of your stories and share your amazing accomplishments. After reading your accomplishments, Mayor Pro Tem Carol Dodge will then call each of you individually with your nominator if they're here, and you will have the opportunity to come forward and meet the council and receive your certificate. An important part is reception, right? Cake and punch, and we'll have group and individual photos following our reception. So bear with me, but here I roll. The first one, and if you'd like to raise your hand when I call your name, I think we have everyone here tonight except possibly two people. James Billinger. Thank you, James. James is an eighth grader at Crossroads Middle School and was nominated by Allison, is it Gleichman? Gleichman. I want to say it right because, hello Allison. She's nominated five students tonight. James has gone through a great deal in his young life. He is very proud of who he is and helps others become more open to the world through his own personal journey. Ms. Gleichman states that James is one of the most brilliant students that she's ever had. James has a deep sense of social justice and equity for others and himself. Given the challenges he has faced and continues to face, he is truly exceptional. James exemplifies the kind of person for which this award was created. The next person is Jaleel Lacy Burdine. I don't think she's here. Okay. She's a senior at Northland High School and was nominated by his teacher, sorry, Michael Sinja. Throughout high school, Jaleel has persevered through his father's illness and passing. He hasn't wavered at all in attitude and his work ethic. Mr. Sinja comments that Jaleel has shown his peers an outstanding example of how to persevere despite the many curveballs life can throw on us. Jaleel is a standout person and student despite many challenges. He has found the best way to honor his father is to keep doing well by striving for greatness. Isaac Garcia. I know Isaac is here. He's an eighth grader at Crossroads Middle School and again nominated by his teacher Allison Gleichman. Through the Discovery Program at Crossroads, Isaac has learned how to handle difficult situations and take personal responsibility for his actions. His love for reading and music has become positive outlets for his energy and to relieve stress. Ms. Gleichman states that like all of us, Isaac is still a work in progress, but he has made huge improvement in his behavior, sense of responsibility, and relationships in his life. Jaclyn Godinez. Is Jaclyn right there? Okay, good. Jaclyn is a senior at Vantage Point High School and was nominated by her teacher Priestley Parker III. Jaclyn has and continues to display an enormous amount of strength and perseverance in overcoming the challenges that brought her to Vantage Point. She currently has a 4.0 GPA, is on the honor roll, and was voted Discovery Student of the Quarter. Through a great deal of adversity, Jaclyn has learned to never give up, appropriately stand up for herself, and focus on the key to success which she knows is her education. Mr. Parker states that he is so proud of Jaclyn for all of her hard work and turning her life around. It is his hope that she will continue on her road to success and become the person she aspires to be. Miguel Gomez. Miguel is a junior at Northland High School and was nominated by his teacher Daleen Bricker. Miguel has struggled with overcoming, with coming, pardon me, from a difficult environment. Despite financial and learning difficulties, he has learned to overcome much adversity. He is on his way to become the first person in his family to graduate from high school. He has worked hard to become a positive role model, worked hard in school, and learned English. He is a leader in FCC LA and participates in many school and community projects. Ms. Bricker states that Miguel deserves this award because he has made no excuses for his difficult adversity and limitation issues, but instead continues to strive to contribute so much to others. Miguel Gonzalez. Miguel is a senior at Northland High School and was nominated by Wade Claus. Miguel has always had a positive outlook on life despite moving from place to place as his family dealt with severe financial hardship. He has used these experiences to drive him to be his very best. He is one of the top seniors and has maintained a 4.0 GPA while helping to support himself and his family. Mr. Claus states that Miguel is one of the best all-around students that he's ever worked with. Miguel is kind, helpful, and a true leader. He will go on to do great things in his life. Tristan Harrison. Where's Tristan at? Tristan Harrison is a freshman at Mountain Range High School and was nominated by Jalon Weaver. Through a great deal of turmoil in his life, Tristan has kept his focus on what he wants most, and that's to go to school and play football. Wrestle too, right? Yeah. Though moving several times, he hasn't missed a single day of school or practice. He maintains all As and Bs. Despite much family turmoil, Tristan focuses on the one thing he can control: himself. He hopes and strives to be the first in his family to go to college. Tristan states that everything happens for a reason. If I let myself get caught up in every bad thing that happened to me, I would never get anywhere. I have to keep moving forward. Ayla Lugo. Ayla, where are you at? Ayla is an eighth grader at Crossroads Middle School. She was also nominated by Allison Gleichman. Ayla has struggled for much of her life with anger issues. Through her hard work in the Discovery Program at Crossroads, she has learned skills that help her to manage her feelings. Ms. Gleichman states that Ayla is applying these lessons to her personal life as well as school. Ayla has realized that confronting issues helps her to be much happier, a successful person at school and at home. Samantha Lidle. Oh, she's not here. I apologize. She's actually out of town right now. Samantha is a senior at Northland High School and was nominated by her teacher Lindsay Lewinberger Clutch. At a young age, Samantha quickly learned to fend for herself despite many family issues including homelessness. Samantha knows that ultimately she is responsible for her future and has had to learn from poor examples in order to excel in her own life. Samantha states that she is grateful for all that she's had to go through. Ms. Lewinberger states that Samantha knows how important education, hard work, and dedication will take her even, take her even though her life has been difficult. Samantha is a true inspiration to many and always goes above and beyond in her dedication to school, community, and helping others. Joseph Martinez. Joseph is an eighth grader at Crossroads Middle School and was nominated by his teacher Allison Gleichman. When Joseph entered the Discovery Program at Crossroads, he took many of its messages to heart using anger and stress management strategies to help deal with challenging situations. Ms. Gleichman states that Joseph is very intelligent, determined, and a very good student. He has learned to have a more positive outlook about school, home, and his future. Because of his positive choices, he is now doing very well in school and has a bright future. Zachary Miller. Zachary is a senior at Northland High School and was nominated by his counselor Michael Stelling. Zachary has endured more in his childhood than most people endure in their lifetimes. Mr. Stelling states that he has true grit, meaning that he has courage, resolve, and strength of character. Zach is very successful in school and pours his energy and efforts into reaching his goals through his passion for the STEM engineering program. His ability to overcome adversity and passion for creating and learning will help him to be successful in his bright future. Destiny Morales. Not here this evening. Destiny is a senior at Northland High School and was again nominated by Michael Stelling. Despite many struggles with financial and medical issues, Destiny has worked hard to overcome many obstacles. Mr. Stelling states that the word motivated truly describes Destiny. She is very motivated as a self-advocate, student, and leader at Northland High School. Destiny is also a very brave person as she challenges herself to enroll in the most rigorous courses at Northland. Destiny has learned to ask for help, navigate the unknown, and persevere through uncomfortable, challenging circumstances. Jordan Nelson. Or JoJo, right? Jordan is an eighth grader at Crossroads Middle School and was nominated by Allison Gleichman. Despite difficult family situations, Jordan has found help through the Discovery Program at Crossroads very impactful. Jordan wants to make her grandmother proud, and she has taken responsibility for her own actions and choices. When she makes a mistake, she owns it and makes changes. Ms. Gleichman states that Jordan is a bright girl who now uses her intelligence to engage in her classwork. Jordan continues to improve in all areas of her life and has made huge growth overall. Lucy Rodriguez. Lucy is a senior at Northland High School and was nominated by her counselor Karen Stem. Lucy has had significant loss as part of her day-to-day life. She is dedicated to helping her grandparents and siblings. Lucy hopes to attend college although her commitment to her family is always top priority. Ms. Stem states that Lucy's strength isn't so much about overcoming adversity, but how she endures and stays focused on moving through it. Lucy is a rock in the storm that is her life right now. Lucy said that she is still in charge of her life and makes her own future, not the many difficult situations that she endures. Tashana Thomas. Tashana is a sophomore at Northland High School and was nominated by Verletta Thomas. Tashana lost her mother at the young age of nine. Her grandparents have helped her put her life in order. She works very hard at school, the STEM team, step team, and the diversity club to put all of her pain into positive action. Ms. Thomas states that Tashana is never without a smile and kind word for everyone. She puts so much love and care into everything she does. Would you all congratulate these 15 amazing students? If I could ask council and Mayor Pro Tem Dodge to come down, and then again I'll remind you if we could call you up individually and if your nominator is here and would like to come up, that would be great also.
James Gillinger. I do. Congratulations. You look like a little green egg if you're here. Congratulations.
I've taken them off.
The next student is Jaleel Lassie Burdine. How about Isaac Garcia? Hi, you know, very thrilled to be here. Congratulations to you. Jaclyn Godinez. Miguel Gomez. Miguel looks a little bit happy.
Sounds like some red shirts are going to be there. Congratulations.
Miguel Gonzalez. Well, this guy dressed up for the occasion. I was taking this serious. The next recipient is Tristan Harrison. Congratulations. Ayla Lugo. Next is Samantha Little or Lidle? You can correct me. Lidle.
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here? Doesn't matter. Joseph Martinez. I saw this guy sitting in the front row. I thought he was pretty cool. Look at him. Do you like Green Day too?
Your mom is better, right?
Okay, so congratulations to you, my friend, and thanks for everybody's hand. Okay, is Zachary Miller here?
Thank you very much for everything you did. Really appreciate it. Congratulations.
Destiny Morales. Jordan JoJo Nelson.
See, I think there's hope for the youth because I see all these cool kids coming forward, and I don't think there are all these cool kids anymore, so I'd like to wear your dress. After my own heart.
Lucy Rodriguez. Lucy Rodriguez. You have a great smile. Congratulations. I just like to say you are all such inspirations and role models to your peers and to adults alike and you should be really proud of everything you've accomplished so far and I'm sure more great things are going to happen to you because you guys are really persevering through some hard times. So, congratulations to all of you again and much success. We're going to take a short recess for about 10 minutes so we'll come back at 7:40. They have cake and punch for you in the room right behind council chambers, so if you want to go, I'm sure they're going to take some photos also.
I don't mean to break up the party, you can continue the party outside the chambers. Maybe somebody would close the doors for us so we could continue the meeting, please. No, wait, wait.
We've always taken a phone call after the shift.
Okay, I did want to make a brief announcement, I'm sorry that I didn't realize that the Adams County Commissioners Chaz Tedesco and Steve Odoricio were present tonight to help us with the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards. So, I don't know if you guys want to say anything maybe briefly or, yeah, come on forward and say something.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, and thank you for your support and that and for the kids.
Does your microphone work?
I think so.
Not now.
Did you turn me off? Alright, well. I just wanted to come and say thank you very much for what you do, Adams County Mayors and Commissioners. Youth Awards are very special. As a former resident of Northland, I appreciate what you do and it's really a good thing to see all these students coming out of Northland High School. I went to Northland High School also, so this is a great thing, I came to support. You didn't need me, you didn't need any of us, you did a great job and we just wanted to witness the ceremony, so thank you very much and we appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the kids, that is a special day.
Thanks, Steve. Steve, did you want to say something?
I'll over chat.
Okay, well, thank you both for coming. Okay, we're going to move on in the agenda to the Economic Development Update with Debbie.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Wow, that is always so rewarding to hear those kids, I mean, it's just wonderful, so I'm glad to be a Northland resident, it's great to do that. Just a few things that I was going to talk about was, in your packet, attachment A is an Economic Development 2014 infographic, that's something we're using for marketing purposes, it just kind of shows the stats, it's kind of the new marketing pieces that people are doing, so we are going to be using that in some of our marketing efforts, it's on the website. Northland was chosen for the Walmart Neighborhood Market for their first grocery home shopping program, which I thought was really great. They have one that they started in their hometown, you know, where Walmart is, but this will be the first one launched in any of their actual stores. So, again, you'll have a kiosk, they're building that right now. Canopy, you call in, you do your ordering online by your phone, your computer, but you're ordering, so you're going to be here between 4:00 and 6:00, and when you drive up to the kiosk, you type in your number and they come out with all your bags of groceries and deliver it and put it in your car. Now, if I can figure out how to get them to deliver it in my house and put it away, then I think we've got something there.
How about cooking?
Right, exactly. I think that's a compliment, they chose Northland because they felt like it was such an easy city to work with, they came in and actually told us that, so.
Well, let's make sure we get that in the Sentinel.
Yes.
That's pretty prestigious for us, yeah.
It's very important, good point, we will do a media release on that. Ribbon cuttings, this last month, we did North Metro Dental Care, Caliber Collision and Innovative Real Estate, Business Networking Classes, the Metro North Chamber of Commerce, we did a joint after-hours with the Denver Escape Room that was very successful, they had over 65 people in there. It was definitely a crowded room, but I think everybody did escape out of there. We also did the Police Business Watch. If you know the escape room, you know that you are locked into a room and you're not supposed to escape, so that's what it meant. Marketplace Business Watch, we had, that was one of the Blizzard mornings and we still had 12 companies there, so it was actually very well attended considering the snow. We also held a Lunch and Learn called SBA Basics Financing Your Business, and that was a packed house as well, we had over 13 businesses, individual businesses in there. Mark your calendars for another, our first business after-hours for Northland on April 20th from 5:00 to 7:00, it's going to be hosted by ATBU Massage, Alpha Channel Group and Point Ministries over in, over off of 112 and Huron. We're also going to be doing another business Lunch and Learn for Cash Flow Management on April 9th, those are becoming very popular and we're trying to mix it up a little bit, as you probably remember last year we did a lot of marketing, social media, we heard that from our business survey that that's what they were looking for. Next month I'll be able to give you the results of our business survey, we're just calculating everything and ended on February 28th, so next month we'll kind of give you an overview on that. Quarter One 2015 Business Anniversaries, 29 businesses, that we were, a special thank you to all of them. And this last month, we welcomed five new storefront businesses and two home bases, which are indicated in your report. Nura Updates for February, we did a grant application for a new cabinet company, they do flooring and cabinets, are going to be moving into the Hillcrest, so this was for signage. We also entered into a PSA with Wimber Inc., they're going to represent Nura as our owner's rep. So, a lot of different projects going on like the 104th and I-25 ramps, they're going to just be looking at the different things, the technical pieces that staff, myself, can't do, and then be working with our planning and Public Works Department. So, it's just kind of an oversight agency and it's on a call basis. We did a feasibility agreement with Evergreen for the Huron Center for the anchor tenant, they have 120 days, they're out there looking for the anchor tenants, identifying anchor tenants right now. And we did enter into an agreement PSA with DHM Designs, they were chosen from the RFP process for the 104th and I-25 ramps for the landscaping on that, we hope to have the final design done in July and then we'll be going forward on the plan for construction after that. Any other questions on Nura that might not have mentioned? The digital advertising billboard, we reduced the price, as you know, last month, and all of the new companies, the six that are listed in your report are new companies, and you'll notice that they are small companies, so it really did encourage a lot of the small businesses to do that. So, last year, we were very successful with that program, in fact, at our Lunch and Learn, the Denver Escape Room had advertised in January and February, and they noted that they actually were able to track up to 35% of their inquiries coming from that digital site, so definitely it was working. 2014, just to give you an update, total storefront businesses were 77 total with 674 employees, 350 of those were from Webster Lake Promenade, so that just shows you how much that brought there, Walmart was another 100. So, we did an actual calculation of the net storefront businesses and with the closed businesses, so you'll see 47 net storefront and about 585 net estimated jobs. The one thing I really want to point out is that a lot of times we don't know when a company opens, and a lot of times businesses don't turn in their business licenses and we find out after the fact, and that's definitely the case for closures. A lot of times we don't find out about it until generally speaking when the sales tax department sends out licensing and they come back and they'll say it's closed. We try really hard to keep it very accurate, but it'll never be perfect, it's never going to be a perfect system. But, there is all the companies that were reported last month, or last year, as well as all the closed in your attachment A and B. Also, last month, City Council asked me to try to find an update, excuse me, on the 2014 foreclosures within this three zip codes, so you'll see of those three zip codes, a very small percentage were Northland. And it's kind of deceiving because you don't really know how many were houses, you're not going to have foreclosures in apartments, but you might have some in townhouses, and the way the realty track, the foreclosure group that did this, they combine all households, but you can still see that it's a very small amount of single-family homes and townhouses in the total amount. So, I can't give you an actual percentage because that's not how they track it, but we were able to break it down a little bit further for you.
Thank you very much for that.
And that's all I have, is there any questions?
Actually, I just wanted to say one thing, so I wanted to commend the Economic Development Office because one thing I've seen really over the last year for sure is that the number of people who are coming, number of businesses who are coming to all of the events, who are taking advantage of all the trainings, who are commenting about them receiving their flyers, I just think is definitely on the rise, and in the middle of that snow to have 12 people show up was really impressive, so thank you for all your hard work in getting our businesses to come together.
Thank you.
Nice job. So, next year's looks similar to this, same thing, same graph, the same way?
Oh, sure. It's all going up.
Thank you for everything you do. You do a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into public invited to be heard. Statements shall be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest, limited to five minutes per speaker, do we have anyone that wants to come forward? No? Okay, we're going to move on then to the financial report, year-end update with Jason Loveland.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council members, this is an unaudited year-end update. Auditors will be here the first two weeks of April, and so hopefully shortly thereafter we'll have kind of final audited numbers to report. I'll start off with Sales and Use Tax update. You'll see from 2013 to 2014, we're at $2.6 million, which is 15.7%. Obviously, that's very strong, sales and use tax growth. You'll see also in December, this is the first time we've presented this number, a large spike, that was up 22%, or almost $400,000 just in that month over the prior year, so the holiday shopping was thriving in Northland this year, it appears. Within some of these growth numbers, I just wanted to mention that accommodations taxes were up 30%, auto use tax was up 10%, and food tax was up 22%. Also, our new industry, retail marijuana combined with estate share and medical marijuana, generated just over a million dollars of that 19.2 million for the year, so I thought you guys would be interested in that since it's a new industry. And then I was going to comment also on, we have the first month of reporting on the new 2% tax on marijuana, and that generated $32,000 in January, so I don't have it in the report because we kind of just came to those numbers, so overall, that's a little bit slower than the pace we had set or expected, but overall, the sales were down slightly in January, which is comparable to last year, but the year kind of started off slow, so we'll keep track and keep that information available to you guys and update you monthly or quarterly. So, the next slide shows our geographic codes, we've been showing this each month, I put it into a graph to maybe make it a little bit easier to see. You'll see the marketplace obviously is our largest sales tax generator by a significant margin, the marketplace makes up about 20% of our total sales and use tax. And you can't tell from the graph that the marketplace was up 3% on the year, and Northland Greens, which is just south of the marketplace, was up 5%. Some of the other notable areas, Washington Point, Washington East, or at least their notable to me, since we kind of go by them every day on the way to work, those were up 2% and 1% respectively, so some of our bigger centers were still showing positive returns but not quite at the pace the rest of the city was. And overall, if you take the marijuana new industry as well as the Promenade and the Walmart, the new developments, overall sales and use tax was up about 6% to 7%, so some of those bigger areas were lacking behind quite a bit compared to what was going on with the rest of the city, so, does you have any questions on this graph at all?
I just had a comment, I don't know, for those of who are listening and can't see the chart, in every single one of our geo-codes, we are up over 2013, some of them aren't significant, but every single area is up, and I think that says great things for the city.
Remind me why we didn't have a Garland one, I know there's one main store, but there's a number of stores in the area where you can have a whole bunch of them, there was a reason why.
So, we didn't report that since one store is going to make up over 75% or 85% of the total sales, it would be pretty obvious to report the one, even that one group, so. But, we can see some growth on our food tax sales, the fact that those were up 22% kind of is an indicator of the returns made from the Walmart, but that's why we don't have Garland broken out.
I get it.
So, we've been thinking about combining that with another area so that we could report something in bulk.
Could it be mixed in with Malle or is that too far off?
We could possibly do that. We're just trying to figure out a way to report it since we have the single source With that, I'll jump into the general funds report. Revenues were up over budget by 13%, 23 million. You'll see in all areas of revenue taxes, we just spoke about that with Webster Lake and some other industries, those were up over budget, partially we were conservative budgeting since at the time of budget, retail marijuana licenses hadn't been approved or stores opened, and then we were conservative on Webster Lake as well, not making the assumption that any of the stores would even open during the year. Obviously, we're off, but to a positive, we're off in a positive direction, so that seems okay. Expenditures, you'll see a fell in line, we spent 97.74% of the budget, which is, I think, pretty good to be that close to our budget on expenditures for the year. You'll see a net change in fund balance of just under $2.2 million to the positive, with an ending fund balance around 15.7 million. These numbers are probably going to change a little bit as we clean up the audit in the year end, but overall, we're looking at an ending fund balance in the general fund of 68% for the year as we move into next year. So, is there any questions on general fund revenues or expenditures?
Jason, do you know how much the expenditure line might change based on the audit, how much of a variation have we had in past years, do you know?
This includes all the accruals that we've done pre-audit, we just haven't physically had the auditors come out.
Okay.
So, these should be not changing too much.
Okay.
Specifically on the expenditure side, they should be, they should be good.
Okay, well, on that note, I want to commend our staff citywide for going under budget on their expenditures this year, again, I think that shows that we have a conscientious staff who is looking out for the best interest of the city in purchasing items and doing projects, so I just want to say thank you to the staff and kudos.
Move into our non-government, or our non-major governmental funds, I'll just touch on this briefly, revenues in the Conservation Trust Funds, which is basically lottery proceeds, came in at just over 98% of what was budgeted. Expenditures also fell below what we had budgeted with the large project of the locker rooms kind of getting on track late in the year. Capital projects, revenue was up 15% over budget at $5 million, and then expenditures... Capital projects, revenue was up 15% over budget at $5 million, and then expenditures were also under budget at $1.6 million. Those two funds, there's not a whole lot to talk about. They kind of fell in line with what we've been seeing through the full year, even through the accrual process. Water and wastewater funds, again, revenues exceeded budget, expenditures fell below budget. You'll see taxes, again, from sales and use tax growth. Interestingly, user charges and fees fell just below budget, about 99%, which is very close. We actually billed half a percent fewer gallons this year than we had in the prior year, and it's kind of amazing. It's like 1.2 billion gallons of water. So, when you look at the numbers, you kind of have to double-check and say, is that right? So, we're still seeing conservation, even with new development, Webster Lake, their water consumption and things like that. We're still seeing enough conservation throughout the city that we're not kind of making leaps and bounds revenue-wise on that. So, that change in fund balance in water and wastewater funds, $2.4 million, giving that an ending fund balance of 17.8. Stormwater funds, again, fell in line with what the budget was, 97% of budget being collected in revenues. Expenditures, there was a $100,000 project that did not happen, which is why expenditures showed that they were being spent at a rate of 55%. And then lastly, the sanitation funds, revenues up slightly, $166,000 of that $183,000 variance. We don't budget for sales of assets. We sold a vehicle for $166,000, so that was in line, as well as expenditures, spending 98% of the budgeted expenses in that account. And that is all I have for recap, if there's anything I can go over. No?
Any questions for Jason?
If you had the number, what would that number be within the air?
68%.
I came up with 76, so...
Yeah. So, the fund, yeah, I think that the ending fund balance is going to be at 68% in the general fund. And then of that $15 million or $16 million, 11 is available, and then 4 is restricted for the 25% tabor, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, let's move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Joanna, will you open the vote, please?
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Okay, we have one public hearing tonight, and that is on CB 1849 Cooperative and Local Preference Bidding. Joanna, would you like to read that for us?
A bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 6-2-3 of the North Glen Municipal Code to authorize the city manager to compare cooperative purchasing prices to prices from North Glen businesses.
Thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak for or against CB 1849 is invited to come forward. And I'm thinking there's no one, so I'm going to close the public hearing on CB 1849 and move right into ordinance and second reading on the same item. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think it's a great thing that we're doing this. I think it's phenomenal.
It's about time kind of idea, I'd say, right? Okay. Joanna, can you open the vote, please?
Vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CB 1849 on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. The first resolution tonight is CR 36. Joanna, please.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glen and Asphalt Specialties Company Incorporated for the 2015 Residential Street Program.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, or actually explanation, I'm sorry. David, are you going to do that one for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem and council members. On January 13th, 2015, the city accepted four formal bids ranging from $442,000 to $510,000 for the 2015 Residential Street Program. Lowest responsible bidder was Asphalt Specialties Incorporated for the amount of $442,740.50. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution, which would authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the City of North Glen and Asphalt Specialties Incorporated for the 2015 Residential Street Program in the amount of $442,740.50, and authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to approve change in work scope and execute relevant change orders up to the approved expenditure limit of $487,014.50, which is inclusive of a 10% contingency.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for David? Seeing none, will you open the vote?
The vote is open. Close that vote, and CR 36 passes unanimously.
Thank you. We move into CR 37. Joanna, please.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glen and Ground Service Company for 2015 On-Call Emergency Ditch and Creek Channel Maintenance.
Thank you. David, this would be you again, right?
Yes. This is an on-call emergency ditch and creek channel maintenance contract, which provides for emergency repairs or debris removal from open-channel creek in the ditch system in situations where the field conditions require equipment or expertise unavailable to the public works department. In addition, the city is required to have pre-established rates for labor and equipment from contractors performing work in order to qualify for the Federal Emergency Management Agency funding in the event of natural disaster. The original contract was awarded to Ground Services Company in 2013 with a maximum of three one-year extensions. That would be 2014, 15, and 16. Each had a potential price rate increase equal to the annual change in the Denver Boulder Greeley Consumer Price Index, which this year is 3.3%. Staff is recommending approval of this resolution, which would allow, authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the City of North Glen, Ground Services Company for the 2015 On-Call Emergency Ditch and Channel Creek Maintenance Contract in the amount not to exceed $30,000.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Can you give me an example of what one of the ditches you might be talking about, because it says not including any open channel that is part of a recognized irrigation ditch system?
For instance, Farmer's High Line Canal or the previously Tuck Lateral, that would be a raw water conveying ditch. An example that they could supplement services are, would be on Grange Hall Creek, if there was an admirable amount of debris clogging the channels, and we were out doing other things, they could be hired for that. Or they could just do simple mowing. Urban drainage provides basically that service twice a year. If we have a wet year, a lot of the times, right down in the drainage channels, it can require more maintenance than urban drainage provides, so this contract would be able to provide that service.
So, basically, anywhere in the city? That's, I was just trying to give an example of where they might...
Well, they'd be drainage systems either.
Someone that's not a recognized irrigation ditch system. I guess I was thinking all the ones that you named are part of that, but they're not.
No.
Okay, awesome, thank you. That's all.
Move to approve.
Oh, hang on, I just have one more question. David, do we typically utilize the contract amount to the full extent? Do we use all that money every year, or...
We don't use all of this every year, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact figure for it, but it's a contract that's been around, I think, for about a couple of years. It hasn't, we haven't used it very long. I think that was the first year, 2013, that we used it.
Any other discussion?
I'll move to approve.
No, that's right, I didn't make a question.
Because we never did that, I don't think.
We did not do that, you are correct. Joanna, can we open the vote, please?
The vote is open.
Thank you.
I'll close that vote, and CR 37 passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is CR 38. Joanna, please.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of North Glen and Goodland Construction Incorporated for the East 112th Avenue Roadway Improvements Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
David?
This is our first major roadway reconstruction for this year, and on February 5th, four bids were received from construction contractors. One firm was deemed non-responsive during the review of the bidding packages, leaving three qualified bidders. Based on the review, all information was deemed that Goodland Construction Company was the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $4,859,122.20. Staff is recommending approval of this resolution, which would authorize the mayor to execute a contract with the City of North Glen and Goodland Construction for East 112th Roadway Improvements Project in the amount of $4,859,122.20, and authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to approve changes in the work scope and execute relevant change orders up to the approved expenditure limit of $5,345,034.20, which is inclusive of a 10% contingency.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for David?
Sorry, I'm a pain tonight. To me, there's a projected shortfall of over $850,000. Can you give a little bit, I mean, that's a huge shortfall to me in the budget and what we budgeted, and why the amount is so much higher?
Yeah, for this project and for the Headwigs project, or all of these large projects, I should inform council that, you know, we put the budgets as best we can for place dollar values, but I don't actually know the dollar value until the designer actually goes out, does due diligence. And what I mean by that is they do a design survey, they do pot-honing, checking for utilities. This particular project was, there was a fairly large cross-section grade differential between Larson and Irma, which caused more stormwater planning and drainage and about 300, about 200 feet of retaining wall, about three feet high to make the grades there. All of those weren't known until we actually got the engineers' estimated probable cost. We got that, as soon as we got that, and we had the design plans completed, we bid the project, and that was only a few months ago. So, you know, this is indicative, I think, of escalating price increases, you know, Denver Boulder Consumer Price Index has been going up between 2.9% and 3.1% for the last four years. Simple math, obviously, you know, from budget figures three years ago, that's a 9% to 12% price increase. So, that's primarily the reason and how that works.
Okay, and then, is this company working on the roadway between 64th-ish or so and around 52nd on Washington by any chance? Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that question. Kent, do you?
I thought they were working on our State Highway 7.
Okay. I would be glad if they are not the company that's working on that stretch of Washington. Just, I'll put it out there. Thank you.
So, after you do all this working, and we pave and do all this, what's the life of that road after Zollsend, before you have to do major...
Before any major, it's 15 years, generally.
15, okay. And that's what my guess was, too. Okay, thank you.
And David, even though I don't like all the extra costs that have come into this project, it's important as one of our major arterials connecting the cities to improve that section, so I'm on board for it. It needs to be done.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, here on Street, remember, we got that in 2009. That was in the height of a depression. Prices ranged, the winning bid for that project was $4.3 million, and it actually ended up coming in about $4.7. But there were bids as high as $6 million for that road. It's a very similar project, it's not concrete, but a very similar reconstruction project as this project. So, I feel pretty comfortable that we're going to get a very good roadway for the price.
Okay, thank you. Any other, just one other question, or one other for our audience? What's the construction period, and when do you expect this to be completed?
It's three, it's a year, 12 months.
So, when do you think the engineering and all that will be done, and we actually start messing with the road?
It's done. This is a construction bid, so we'll give, once we get their bonds and all of their paperwork, we'll give them a notice to proceed, assuming council approves the contract tonight.
So, we can start seeing construction probably in a couple of weeks, huh?
Wouldn't be that soon. I would say it'd be beginning of April at best. So, they'll have to mobilize a lot of equipment there, too.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Just curious.
We'll put, we'll certainly let residents in the area know. It'll be on our internet page, and we'll certainly get the word out.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Joanna, would you open the vote, please?
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CR 38 passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to CR 38, no, wait, do I have the wrong number? Nope. CR 39. Joanna, please.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of North Glen and Kumar and Associates Incorporated for East 112th Avenue Materials Testing Services.
Move to approve.
Second. David?
Mayor, Pro Tem and council members, this is the sister contract, or at least one of them, to the roadway project. This is a separate contract to perform materials testing, with, for instance, compaction testing, density of the pavement going down, placement of steel, and things such as that. On February 12th, 2015, seven proposals were received from the geotechnical firms to provide quality-controlled materials testing services. Proposal prices range from $48,374 to $145,118. Two firms were deemed non-responsive during the review of the proposal, leaving five qualified firms. Staff is recommending approval of this resolution, which would award this material testing contract to Kumar and Associates for the amount of $57,257.50, and authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to approve changes in scope and execute relevant change orders up to the approved expenditure limit of $68,709, which is a 20% contingency.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Joanna, will you open the vote, please?
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CR 39 passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the last resolution is CR 40. Joanna, please.
A resolution authorizing an increase of $29,630 in the amount of the contingency previously authorized in the contract between the City and Barba &amp; Sons Construction Incorporated for the Recreation Center Locker Room and Restroom Renovation Project for a total authorized contract amount of $819,468.
Second. David's off the hook this time, I think, or do you want David to explain it?
I'll read it.
Okay.
The Recreation Center Locker Room and Restrooms Project has been underway since December 2014. When this project was bid, all bids came in above the allocated budget. Barba &amp; Sons selected bidder with work with city staff and the project architects, Zeller and Pennock, to value-engineer the project, resulting in a decrease in the bid pricing of nearly $80,000. Revised contract pricing fit within the allocated budget, and additional funds were identified to allow for a small contingency of 6.5% for the overall, of the overall project budget. As the project has progressed, several unknown conditions have been identified. At this point, the project, the approved contingency has been fully expended. There is at least one additional outstanding change order at this time, which will result in the necessary expenditures beyond the approved budget. Staff is recommending an increase in the contingency amount from 6.5% to the traditional 10.10%, which equates to $29,630 to cover the outstanding change order and any other unanticipated conditions that may arise. So, staff is recommending approval of this resolution, which would authorize additional expenditures of $29,630 in contingency, and authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to approve minor change orders in the scope of work and execute relevant change orders up to the new total expenditure limit of $819,468.
That was a long one, huh? Thank you. Any discussion?
So, we're still under $50,000, however, correct? Is the net-net of this?
Amanda?
So, the previous project did have a contingency. I believe we were at about $50,000. This increases that contingency by an additional $30,000 so that we are able to complete not only the existing, the outstanding change order, but anything else that may come up as we go. We're anticipating that, since demolition is complete, that our incidence of change orders will be greatly reduced as we come now until the end of the project.
But under what we originally had for this, didn't we have a savings of about $80,000 or so?
Correct.
So, it's really still $50,000 under what had been projected originally?
Correct.
Good. I just wanted to clear that up to make sure people understood that. Thanks.
Any other questions, Amanda, while she's here? No? Seeing none, can we open the vote, please?
The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and CR 40 passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. At this point, I, oh, no, we have the action item. I'm sorry, I was moving right into the hearing, Aiden. We have an action item tonight on the Gaylord Entertainment Project. And... And Corey, are you gonna give us a little background on this one?
I'm gonna do my best.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, members of council, I believe you have correspondence from the mayor of Aurora. Ultimately, I think what the correspondence is asking is that you reaffirm the resolution that you previously adopted in two thousand and twelve, resolution number twelve dash eighteen, that ultimately, at that time, authorized the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Regional Tourism Act funding application of the city. From the mayor of Aurora's letter, the city is concerned that there may be an attempt, it looks like, to retroactively revisit the funding, and so, I believe what he is simply asking for is a motion to reaffirm the city of Northland's support by reaffirming resolution number twelve dash eighteen.
Do we need someone to make a motion to reaffirm first? Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion on this item, please?
I believe there's a website, I don't know enough about it, but there's, can you help me with the name?
Sure, I can help you with Aurora Chamber. Aurora Chamber has it out, you can go to their website. It's www.aureachamber.org.
And it seemed like this was coming out of legislature that was going to be introduced at the Capitol on behalf of the Tourism Board?
I'm not sure who it's on behalf of, but there is concern that legislation is gonna be introduced that will perhaps look at either reapplying or revisiting the application that was in a couple of years ago.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
I just think we should support this and support our neighboring city, you know, in this.
I think we originally supported it in two thousand and twelve, so I wouldn't see why we wouldn't now, but, okay. So, we have a motion to affirm, okay, motion to reaffirm resolution number twelve dash eighteen. Okay, so can we open the vote, please?
The vote is open. I'll close that vote and the motion to reaffirm resolution number twelve dash eighteen passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now I will recess the regular city council meeting and call to order a meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority. Joanna, will you call the vote, please?
Mayor Downing is absent. Mayor Pro Tem, Carol Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Snetsinger?
Here.
Councilmember Malika is absent. Councilmember Wynd Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Carrico?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Winnicki?
Here.
First, we have approval of minutes from February ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Joanna, can you open the vote, please?
The vote is open. I'll close that vote and the motion to approve the February ninth, two thousand and fifteen minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I will read a brief opening statement on the procedure of the hearing. I will now open the, I already did that, thanks, Corey. Oh, no, I guess this is kind of different. I will now open the hearing on the application for a new retail marijuana store license by AJO Holdings LLC, DBA Natural Selections for the premises located at nine-twenty West One Hundred and Fourth Avenue. The Northland City Council, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to section eighteen dash fourteen dash five and eighteen dash fourteen dash seven of the Northland Municipal Code, has jurisdiction to conduct this hearing under the Colorado Medical Marijuana Code found at Title twelve, Article forty-three point three of the Colorado Revised Statutes and also under the provisions of Article fourteen of Chapter eighteen of the city's municipal code. The procedure to be followed in this case will be as follows. The city staff will provide a brief summary of the matter. The licensee or the licensee's legal counsel will present any evidence in support of the rehearing on the application and any other persons in support of the applications may testify. Any persons opposing the application may then testify. The applicant may then submit any rebuttal testimony. All witnesses will be placed under oath by the city clerk and may be cross-examined by any party, council for any party, or the members of the city council. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the city council or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, Mr. Hoffman, you may proceed.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, members of council, this is a little bit unusual in that the regulations that the city council approved at its last meeting do not apply. In fact, they don't go into effect until tomorrow. This application was pending, this location had been approved under the previous regulations, and when the moratorium was in effect, this application was allowed to proceed through because it was an existing business and under the moratorium at the time, existing businesses were excluded from the application of the moratorium. In addition, this application then is processed under the old rules, so this will certainly be the last one under the old rules. And under the old rules and under the statute, you still have to find that the needs and desires of the neighborhood are not being met, that a new, in this case, retail marijuana store which would make this particular business a dual license are not being met. You have to find that the applicant is qualified as well. I would suggest to you that since the applicant has been qualified as a marijuana, a medical marijuana business, that the focus of the hearing should be on whether the needs and desires of the neighborhood require another retail store, and that's ultimately the burden that the applicant has to make in his presentation, that there is a need for another retail store.
Thank you. Would the licensee like to step forward and be sworn in by the city clerk, please?
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony or affidavit will be the truth, the public truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Okay. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Aiden O'Donovan, owner of Natural Selections at nine-twenty One Hundred Fourth. I am here tonight for my retail license. I'm reading off of a sheet again, because I'm a terrible public speaker, you guys are used to it by now. Don't want to take up too much of your time, as I feel like I'm mainly, you know, repeating a lot of info for my first public hearing, so please forgive me if it, you know, starts to seem a little redundant. You know, as always, I'd like to thank Lisa Andrews first, as well as everyone else in the city clerk's office for making this process so much easier. Seriously, the state found a typo in my retail application and Lisa had it taken care of within an hour, this type of thing, in the city of Denver where my cultivation facility is. That would take a week or two, if not more. So, getting started, as I explained initially, it's always been my intention to operate as a dual medical and retail store. I tried to be incredibly upfront about that from the get-go with you guys, you know, despite the fact that technically I had to register and establish my medical business first before I became eligible for retail. You know, it was never my intention to be a medical-only store, and I think, you know, as honest as possible about this since day one when we were doing the initial hearing. You know, just to reiterate why it took so long, you know, you guys, I think, initially approved that in July, and then I couldn't make application for retail, you know, I'd love to do it in the next week, but I wasn't allowed to do it through the state until my medical license here in Northland was finalized, which required a certificate of occupancy, you know, so in order to attain the CEO, I needed to complete the build-out for my dispensary, you know, which required a month or two of fundraising and followed by architectural drawings, waiting for building permits, building of the store, et cetera, et cetera, and this isn't even including the time spent on the cultivation side. So, the time definitely gets away from you, as I've learned. But, you know, I was finally able to open the store just shy of a month ago, and I'm super excited about finally being here. So, just to give you an update, you know, the store's really nice, it's nicer than I could have ever imagined. It's a very classy dispensary, and it's cool as we seem to have, you know, pretty classy clientele as well, there's just generally a lot of great folks from all walks of life shopping with us and excited to have us around, you know, really excited about us there, get people, you know, people coming in that are thanking us, so, you know, if you guys are over in the area, I'd love to invite you to check it out. So, up until now, you know, we've been doing kind of what they call in the restaurant industry, just a soft opening, haven't been actively advertising much and have minimal signage, just some decals in the window. I spoke with Debbie Tuttle initially, and actually I ran into Mayor Downing at the city clerk's office, and she told me you guys do a big, a free ribbon cutting, this is a few months ago, and that sounds awesome, so, you know, I was planning on having a big, hopefully having a big grand opening once all this licensing stuff is complete, so I'm really excited about that and hopefully I can schedule it and some of you guys will be able to make it. Regarding what's been going on at the store, you know, I'm still, you know, actively separating ourselves from the other shops in town, but providing several unique strains, growing all organically at a cheaper price point than everybody else. I mean, that's been my main thing since day one, and right now, our average price for an eighth, which is a pretty, you know, standard purchase, an eighth of an ounce, is twenty-nine dollars, which is significantly lower than a lot of the other dispensaries, and we're going lower than that, we're actually gonna, hopefully be getting that down to around the twenty-four, twenty-five dollar mark real soon. Growing methods are more environmentally friendly than most, and I'm working on making them more so, you know, being green is a big, is a big thing for me and important. You know, for example, we're purchasing a hundred percent renewable energies at our warehouses and are pursuing greenhouse options, hopefully, for possible expansion in the future. I'm actively giving hiring preference to Northland residents, so so far I've hired five people, two of whom live here in Northland. Now, I have a few more applications on file, and I'd love to continue keeping, you know, keeping my original promise of creating jobs in the community, but, you know, I'm too slow to hire anybody else right now as it's just medical sales only, so hopefully that'll pick up. You know, currently I have a hired security guard on site every day from open to close. We have top-of-the-line equipment for scanning IDs, haven't had any sort of incident or anything like that. I actually heard recently that you guys haven't had any incidents at any of the shops here, which I think is, you know, pretty impressive. I personally bet at the shop every day, except for one, so every day we've been open, I'm there, and it's been really cool to kind of get to, you know, become a part of the community and get to know the residents in that area. Also, giving Northland residents member pricing which generally equates to about ten percent, so I'm really kind of wanna, you know, trying to do good things for the residents here. In my initial hearing, you know, a few months back, I talked a lot about my intention to donate one percent of profits to a charity. Our first tax filing is due in a few weeks, and as of now, that's going to Disabled American Veterans, which is over on Malle, but I think instead of doing the same one every time, I think I kind of wanna spread it around. I know Councilmember Snetsiger says she has some interesting, interesting local charities, and I think maybe we'll change it up every month, every couple of months, so definitely reach out to me if you have something in mind. So, moving on, right now, we have about fifteen to twenty people, sometimes more, a day who would like to shop with us but are not medical patients, so these are people that are coming to the door and, you know, we'd have to turn them away. That's not even mentioning the people that call, I mean, the phone rings at least a few times an hour for people asking. You know, as I stated before, I'm very passionate about cannabis as medicine, but I also firmly believe in the right to safe access to cannabis for adults who prefer, you know, perhaps prefer alcohol as a safe way to unwind or relax at the end of the day. You know, it really pains me to have to send away this much, this much business day in and day out and just have to tell people to go bring their money somewhere else. It's made even more painful by having to do so in an area where the residents, you know, voted in favor of retail marijuana by a margin of almost two to one, you know, and I talked a lot about that originally as well, so I truly, you know, truly believe in the regulate-alcohol model that our state's adopted and believe that regulation, you know, provides a much better alternative to the black market as people were living in for decades before this, so, you know, of course, we need to hold dispensaries, you know, liquor stores and pharmacies to a higher standard than other businesses, and I'm, you know, I'm proud to say I think I've met that standard and will continue to do so in the future. So, since day one, you know, I've really been trying to make transparency my biggest thing and I really want to keep an open line of communication between myself and you guys as well as between any other potential concerned members of the community. So, almost done, but another thing I spoke to Debbie Tuttle about was the tax that Adams County was gonna try to be levying on Northland's dispensaries, and I was all set to go to the hearing and speak out against it, but it seems like it was canceled at the last minute, but, you know, if it comes up again, I'm happy to help you guys fight that battle, do my best in the public speaking realm, but, you know, in the meantime, I look forward to contributing to the tax base here, and some of those numbers that Jason was talking about are pretty exciting and, you know, I'm confident in bringing in significant revenue to the city through my retail sales, which I think are being dedicated to a senior center, which sounds really cool, as well as to the state with the education fund, so, you know, that final aspect of my business that sets me apart and I think is gonna be bringing in that, you know, that tax revenue and customers from the neighboring communities. You know, my proximity to Brimfield, Thornton, Westminster, and Federal Heights is pretty huge, and none of those contain any marijuana stores. As I stated before, you know, I'm truly confident that our location's gonna see better sales than a lot of Northland's other dispensaries due to its proximity to those, you know, Brimfield, Thornton, Federal Heights, and Westminster. So, yeah, I mean, the other shops are, you know, mostly on the other side of town, so people are coming out from those communities already. As far as I know, I think I'm the last of Northland's five dispensaries to get my retail license, I think everyone else has already made the conversion. I don't know if they're all open yet, but, yeah, I'm really only asking for a chance to have the same, you know, competitive edge as everybody else. Being stuck in the medical-only zone, you know, puts me at a pretty major disadvantage and kind of prevents a lot of local residents who don't, who aren't medical patients from having access to my, you know, my organic medicine and at the prices that I'm trying to provide. So, I just lost my place. I also understand you guys have lifted your moratorium and you're accepting applications for new business, so, you know, I'll welcome that competition as well, I think competition is always good for businesses and, or good for the customers even if it's not good for the business, is what I meant to say. So, just to close out, you know, as I emphasized before, you know, if I don't stay true to anything I'm saying, you know, please, transparency, transparency, I wanna, I want you guys to reach out to me, and you always have cause for revocation or can deny my renewal. So, you know, that pretty much concludes it, and, you know, sorry if you've heard a lot of these points before, just the bureaucratic nature of the state stuff prevented me from applying for medical and retail concurrently, which is really what I was trying to do from the get-go. And, yeah, but otherwise, I'm really, you know, grateful to be here and be a part of the community and just, you know, taking this final step towards completing the business, so. And one thing I wanted to ask you guys, I've been hearing rumors about that you guys are gonna let us potentially stay open later, I don't know if anyone can speak to that or is that just all kind of hearsay?
Eight o'clock, is that correct?
For the retail component.
Yeah, so, that's cool. You guys have any questions for me?
Okay, we can open up to questions, cross-exam? I have a question.
Yeah.
You're going to call the store Natural Selections, right?
Oh, it is called Natural Selections.
It is, okay, because I haven't been.
That's what the decal said.
Okay, well, I just questioned it because it had a trade name in here that was different and I just.
What was the trade name?
It said Hi Society Cannabis.
Oh, man, that's way outdated. So, I don't know if you remember my very initial hearing, that was where we were at, that was what I was thinking about calling it, and then I kind of decided that.
Right.
That Natural Selections made a lot more sense.
Okay, I just wanted to double-check.
Emphasized the natural product and it goes well, it's everything.
It's a much better name.
Thanks.
Yeah, we like that better.
Why would that be, did anybody else see that? That's, I feel like, I'm just surprised that.
Because I was reading all the lease agreement.
Oh, okay, so there's an addendum at the end of the lease agreement.
Oh, it's after that, okay.
For AJO Holdings, which is now the trade name registered.
Okay.
The DBA is Natural Selections.
Thank you, that's all right.
There's also a shark something or.
Yeah, exactly, the initial one is Hammerhead Shark, which was never gonna, that was the LLC, but, you know, LLC is different than trade name, but it's all in order, so.
Any other questions?
So, your proximity to a school.
Hmm.
How would you detour students that are, and I'm not just picking on you, I'm gonna pick on the liquor store that's near you.
Yeah, fair enough. Henry's the owner of the liquor store.
Right. How do you detour someone that's, kids that are targeting someone going into your store and coming back out, just like a liquor store has.
So, that's the, the security company we're using is called Collective Protective Services, and they are phenomenal. This guy, I mean, he's, he, you know, I'm almost embarrassed to say that, I didn't think of it first, but he does rounds at lunchtime, which I can't remember when that is off the top of my head, but it's like a solid hour and a half, as well as when the kids are getting out of school, and he's out front, and he pretty much looks like a police officer. I don't know if, I don't know if he was there, was he there that, when was he, the first time? Well, the first guy actually wasn't, it was the same company, he was the trainer, but the guy that's there now, I mean, it's essentially, you know, anybody that's more than ten feet away would think that he is a police officer and not a hired security guard. So, you know, he's out there and, you know, making rounds at any point when there would be anybody walking by, and it's really, I think it's, you know, been effective as far as, you know, I have seen once or twice when there's kids that look like they're kind of trying to even walk, cut through the parking lot that way, and then they look over and make, do the big, you know, all the way up the street, all the way over to Molly Kitchen, so. So yeah, I mean, that's kind of the main...
Does your security guard have access to your cameras so he can be watching that at the same time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, everything. Yeah, cameras are great. We have 16, and they're super high resolution. It's a really efficient system. I'm proud of it.
On this next one, I'll talk slow. Are you aware that you're in the urban renewal boundary area?
Yes.
Do you know all the rules and regulations and what urban renewal and the powers that urban renewal authority has in that area?
So I'm aware of that. I haven't really been able to get a straight answer out of anybody as to what that means. I think that, as far as I know, it sounds like there's a chance that that building's going to be bought out and demolished, which would be, which obviously I don't want to happen. We put a lot of money about, it's really nice in there, spent almost a couple hundred thousand dollars. But in the meantime, as far as everybody I've talked to, Debbie, it sounds like the best course of action for me is to continue to just try to be successful, which is why I'm here, taking this final step especially. But to try to do as well as I can before it gets demolished, if that is what ends up happening.
I mean, long-term, I would assume that that does happen. Now, does that happen? I don't know when it does, but I mean, just that you're aware of that and you understand...
Yeah, no, I definitely am aware, and it seems like there's not really much I can do, other than just try to keep an eye on it and plan accordingly. In the meantime, yeah, I mean, it's almost, you know, makes me even more eager to be able to open up and try to make some money back before it happens.
Absolutely. I understand.
Yeah. Is there... I mean, can you guys, are you allowed to talk to me about that? I understand the Neura stuff is mostly closed, I mean, to the public, so I don't...
You open the cameras.
I don't have a chance of that either.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. I mean, yeah, please do keep me abreast of what's going on, that'd be great, but in the meantime, I think I gotta keep going.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Aiden, thanks for coming. I guess my question is, why is it needed? Show us where the need is and where the lack of service currently is, because that's what we have to face this on this evening. And so far, all I've heard is you have 15 people a day who come in.
Yeah, well, it's 15 to 20 people. What's that?
That doesn't seem like a great amount of need.
Well, so follow me for a second. If 15 to 20 people are coming a day, not to mention calling, that's X amount. We've been open for 24 days, so that's close to 500 potential people. It's not the same people that are coming back. It's not the people that have forgotten that we're not retail. So these are potential new customers every single time. So you say 15 to 20 people a day, that's not much, but if the first 15 to 20 people come and think about a compounding, if these are people that shop once every few days, that's a potential few extra 100 customers a day, not to mention it's going to sure just continue to keep happening in the foreseeable future. And I think a lot of that, the main thing I was emphasizing initially, a lot of that is based on the proximity to those other jurisdictions, I think. We have to check IDs right now and red cards, and that's all, you know, those are all, not all, but a significant amount are from those areas that I was just mentioning, where they would either otherwise have to go to Boulder or down to Denver to the closest dispensary. So really just bringing in all that business from Brumfield, Thornton, Westminster, Federal Heights, and, you know, these compounding people, I think that, once they came in, they saw our prices, our quality, they would definitely be, I'm confident to say, they would be repeat customers, and we'd have a bunch more regulars. Whereas right now, we have a handful of, I'd say maybe 70 to 80% of businesses is repeat customers. So people come in, they get an idea for it, they meet us, they see the product, and then they decide if they like it or not. Happy to say that most people do, and then they come back. The problem with everybody that I'm denying is they can't come back. So we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of people so far. And I've been trying to get their collect phone numbers and emails so that, once I did get retail, that I could send it out and say, hey, come back, check me out. But even the people that didn't put that down, I'm sure they're going to swing back by, and we still have that same number coming through every day. It's overwhelming. It's painful to have to be like, no, sorry, can't come in.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else?
Aiden, I just wanted to say one thing. I definitely appreciate that you have the presence of a security guard from open to close, but I did want to just correct you maybe when you're saying that there's no incidences of crime, incidents of crime, because I do believe that some of the dispensaries have had attempted break-ins and...
Have they?
Things like that. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Okay, yeah, I am. Well, I am now. I mean, our security is great, though. I mean, not just the guard, but the locks, the safes, the cameras. We actually did have an incident way before we were open where our contractor left a tool set out behind, and somebody stole it, and we got them on camera, and it seems like the police are working on it. So hopefully they can use our footage, because it was pretty high resolution and make that happen.
Well, I think they all think that they have really good security, but people try anyway, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, no, no. Keep on our toes, for sure.
Anything else for Aiden? No? Okay. Aiden, you can have a seat. I'm going to ask if there's anybody else that would like to testify in support of the applicant, but I would say no, looking at the crowd out here. Is there anyone who would like to testify in opposition of the applicant? No? Okay. All right. Are there any objections on that one before? Sorry. All right. Do I hear a motion then, either for approval or denial?
If you could close the public hearing.
Public hearing is now closed. Now, do I hear a motion in support or denial, please?
May I put him? I move to approve the application.
Second.
Director of City Attorney for the authority to prepare a draft resolution approving the retail marijuana business license application filed by AJO Holdings and for the draft resolution to be presented to the authority for action on March 23rd.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? Joanna, can you open the vote, please? The vote is open.
I'll close that vote, and the motion as stated by Councilman Winnicky passes unanimously.
Thank you. Here you go, Aiden.
I need to learn Pete before, because I'm going to chat.
You should have had a piece of cake.
What's that?
You should have had a piece of cake. Yeah.
It did occur to me, but it didn't cross my mind because I have this vote. Thank you, guys. You all have my contact info.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Aiden. Take care.
Okay, I would like to adjourn the meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority and reconvene into the regular city council meeting. We are moving into communications. Jean, I'll start with you.
None.
Marcy?
Well, we had lots of business events in the last week, and so those were great, but I also wanted to just say I attended coffee with Mayor Protem this morning, and I was actually impressed we had two new businesses that actually came and attended as well. It was great to see them come and participate in those events as well, and then lots of new faces. So I would like to see more Ward Three residents once a month, please.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Well, I attended a couple of the ribbon cuttings this past week. Innovation Real Estate. They're really quite an astounding real estate business. They do a lot of professional development of their people, and they seem to be attracting different real estate agents from different companies, but very family-oriented. It was a very nice event, and I was really impressed with what it looked like they had to offer. And then I also went to the Caliber Collision, and for me, I never know if I'm being ripped off on a car thing, to be very honest with you. And the way they come in and the process that they follow with cleaning the car first and marking every place where they have... I know you were there, too, and so was the mayor, but I mean, it was a great tour of the facility on how they actually take care of the bodywork and keep people informed on what's going on. And then they have rental car as well in their facility. So it was just very impressive, and they actually are interested in maybe even partnering with the Bowman School to maybe bring some kids in from high school into their program. So I was very excited about that. So very impressed with both businesses. And then I just want to plug that I know on Wednesday there's a lot going on, but the North Glen Community Foundation is having a dine and donate at the Glen from 5:00 to 10:00, and whatever food items people purchase there, hamburgers, whatnot, 10% goes back to the community foundation for our utility assistance program. So we hope it's kind of a pre-St. Patty's Day celebration, and we hope folks will come, and even if they eat already, come and have dessert, because I know there's a Neura meeting and the Arts Humanities meeting, but we hope people will come out and have some fun and get a burger or dessert or something. And we appreciate their partnership. So that's it for me.
Okay. And yes, I was at coffee with the Mayor Protem today, and I'd like to thank David and Stephen Stokes, because you guys were really great with everybody, and thanks to everybody who showed up and didn't give me a hard time. That was nice. I last Friday attended the seniors' National Pig Day Celebration, if you ever even knew there was such a thing, which I did not, but all the dishes that they prepared had some type of bacon, even the cakes and cookies, and it was just a fun event, and I had some extra pig cookies that were cute that I delivered to the police department afterwards, and I think they liked them. I think they were appreciated.
Did they have bacon in them, too?
They did not have bacon, sorry.
But they were the shape of a pig.
But they had pig faces on them, yes. They were cute. They were cute. It was meant in the nicest possible way. Also, on Wednesday, I know, Leslie, you have the dine and donate going on, but here at the El Parsons, we are going to have the sculpture voting, and that will start at 5:30. And I'm not sure how many people Michael has. I think he has quite a few, but if you'd still like to sign up, I know it's late notice, but you kind of have to call ahead because they're going to be serving just a light dinner that night, and then we'll move into the theater to pick from the sculptures of what will be chosen for Art on Parade, five sculptures, from, I think, about 50, if not more. And that is always fun. That's a fun thing to do. A reminder that the canal cleanup is this Saturday, starts at 8:30. You need to sign up ahead of time for that also, so if you'd like to call in on that. And I think that's it for me.
I like when you start at this end, because there's nothing left by 10:00. That was it? It's all done, over?
You can double up.
No, actually, both businesses, we went to the ribbon cuttings, were amazing businesses I thought, too. So they were pretty good about that. And if you don't know about cars and you always have problems with that, then I got something I'll sell you. But I have nothing else. That's it. Everything else was covered.
Okay.
Thursday night will be our Parks and Rec Advisory Monthly Meeting. We'll be looking at sponsorship packets, a couple of fee waivers for, a summary of fee waivers for 2014. And at the last month's meeting, we had a public hearing on recreation programs, and just like we had this evening in most of our council meetings, we had no public participation. So this is just kind of a call out to our residents. Please show up and give us your input. You know, we are representative form of government, but if we never hear from you, it's really hard to represent you. So for me, I like to hear what our residents have to say about what we're doing and what our programs are, what we're doing good, what we're not doing well. So I just urge you to reach out and give us a call or shoot us an email, come to a meeting, just kind of let us know what's going on out there so we know everybody's alive. I'm done with my PSA. Thank you.
Joanna?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
David?
Nothing tonight.
Spoke enough tonight. Cory?
Just one item, and that is I'm going to be sending council out a brief update on a couple of matters, but I wanted to highlight one, because it's going to happen before the next council meeting. And that is, as you may recall, several months ago, the city was sued by one of the, a potential marijuana licensee seeking to overturn the city's decision denying the marijuana license. That matter has been set by the Adams County District Court for oral argument, and so there will be oral argument Thursday, March 19th, at 1:30. I'll put it in an email to you, but certainly you're welcome to attend, and we'll argue, we'll respond to questions from the court, and then at some point thereafter, the court will issue a decision.
Is it just you that's going to be there?
Yes.
In support of the city?
Yes.
And what would happen if the courts told you had to open them up?
The court doesn't... The decision will be not whether it can be opened or not. It will be whether you abused your discretion in denying it, and if, in the unlikely event, the court were to determine that you abused your discretion, we'd go back for another hearing.
Back here?
Yes.
So the court cannot order, it's kind of a separation of powers, the court can't order that the application be granted. The court can only say that there wasn't a basis for you to deny it, and then you basically go back through the application process, the hearing process.
And if it was reheard, would it be based on the regulations?
It would be based on the new regulations.
It would be based on the new. Okay. Okay. That's it. We've got public invited to be heard, but I'm thinking there's nobody for that either. So I believe the city council meeting is adjourned, and we will convene into an executive session pursuant to Section 4.5D of the City of North Glen Home Rule Charter for legal consultation and advice regarding marijuana taxation.
And that needs to be in the form of a motion.
Second. Joanna?
The vote is open.
Thank you.
I'll close that vote, and the motion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.